You have.
No, we're on Baker's. Wait, 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 wait.
He said, "I should be on Baker's." I'm gonna ask him about it. Oh, did he? Mail East. I see him. Amy, how many times have you changed? Oh. He was just... He tried to stick delays in. I just borrowed one. Run down here real quick. Yeah.
Welcome, everyone. Call the meeting to order. This is a joint Lemoore City Council meeting, and also, we will be sitting as Lemoore Redevelopment Successor Agency for item three dash four. So, let's start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation by Minister Kimberly Nelson.
Father God, we come before you, Lord Jesus, humbly. Lord God, as citizens of Lemoore, Lord God, we ask you for your guidance. We ask that you be with our council members and with our mayor, Lord, as they make heavy decisions. Father God, that you would speak into their hearts and that you would guide them and that you would help them make these choices and these decisions for our citizens, for themselves, for their families as well. We ask for your blessing, Lord God, on our city. We ask for your blessing, Father God, on the children of Lemoore, on the adults, on all those that call this place their home, over our military. Father God, we ask for your protection over our police, over our fire. Father God, over our ambulances, over all the citizens of this town. Lord Jesus, you know the things that need to happen here. You know the way that we should go. And we ask you, Lord, to lead, and we will follow. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, at this time, are there any... Let's do the roll call. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blair?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Chedester?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Neil?
Here.
Mayor Madrabel?
Here.
Thank you. We've established a quorum. Thanks. All right, so at this time, we will go to our agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Are there any items that we need to remove from the agenda as it is today?
I would like to please remove item three dash two.
For discussion?
For discussion.
When we get to consent calendar, I guess we can do that, right? That's consent calendar? Yeah. Okay.
So, staff would also like to remove item five dash three, Mayor?
All right. Why is that? Why are we removing that?
There's a typo on the APN that was just caught. And being it was noticed, we have to bring it back at a later date.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So, we will proceed to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward, address the council on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council? Come forward, please.
This is where I go, right?
Uh huh. Yes, sir. Please state your name, sir.
I'm Jason Schimoleski.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of Lemoore for about a year. Prior to that, I lived my time in Hanford outside of the military. I'm coming today to talk about the dog park that Lemoore has, I guess. It's a water runoff area. It's not ADA accessible. I have a lot of friends here who are disabled pets. And I have a service dog. And I like to go take my service dog there to be a dog, you know, to play with other animals and stuff like that. And first time I went to Lemoore, it was horrible. It was absolutely horrible. I had to park here and then walk this way, walk above uneven grade, and then walk down there. And part of my disability is, you know, ankle and knee surgery that's had. And I was in pain. I was in pain by the time I got there. It needs work. It needs to be ADA accessible. I mean, I go to Hanford. Everybody from Lemoore, I mean, people that all the time, they don't come to Lemoore. That's a shame. We should be able to have that here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have another... A comment here from Margie... Marge Marsh for a public comment.
Marge Marsh, three sixty-seven Walnut. Mayor, council members. I went to a senior board meeting today. Needless to say, I was not real happy when I left. Senior Board... Center Board of Directors consists of seven people, but there is no leadership, and they are ineffective. Proper maintenance of the center is not done. Health violations are not fixed. And I have sat in council for the past two or three years and have listened to comments on how the city was... Has no legal jurisdiction on the senior center. Now, the city is trying to negotiate meals for the center as well as city employees preparing meals. The center has numerous problems, and the members cannot afford an attorney to solve them in a court of law. The $1.4 million grant of taxpayer dollars should have replaced the leaky roof over the seniors having lunches. The grant money was not prioritized effectively. No input for membership was done. Approximately 100 seniors have been eliminated in the senior center due to no air conditioning. These seniors cannot afford to pay the required rental fees for the bingo building. I thought the senior center was to accommodate seniors, not be against them. The center is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) and should serve the seniors, which they are not doing. As a 501(c)(3), they are accountable to the state and to the IRS. The city should not be managing the senior center via meals and/or air conditioning problems. Problems have existed for over a decade and should be resolved by the seniors. And I thank you for your time for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment? That's all the cards I have for now. All right, we'll go ahead and move on then. We don't have any ceremonial presentations at this time. Go to department and city manager reports.
Yeah, good evening. Just a few this evening. We'll start with Chief Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'd like to invite all of the council members, as well as the community members, out to National Night Out. This year will be held on Tuesday, August 7th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. And our event will take place at Heritage Park this year, so we hope to see you all out there. We'll have food and fun for the kids. We're doing this in conjunction with our partners at Lemoore Volunteer Fire Department. We always have a great turnout, so we hope to see you out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Frank Rivera.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I have a couple of things to update you on. First of all, is the TTHM Design Build RFQ. The RFQ was published on July 5th. Prequalifications were due today, but last Friday, we sent an addendum. So, we postponed the prequalifications for Friday, July 20th. After the 20th, we'll have a week to review the prequalifications, which are... And then, at that point, the final applicants will have a due date of August 7th. At that point, we will choose the top candidate. And then, on August 21st, we will bring it to council with our selection and for your approval. The second thing I want to update you on is a few... Almost a couple of months now, you brought up concerns about adding a traffic signal at the intersection of Hanford-Monroe Road and Liberty due to the Lennar development that's occurring on the north side of the Hanford-Monroe Road. QK performed a preliminary study, and the traffic does not meet warrants. So, that means that if the city wants a traffic signal, the city would have to fund it 100%, which are estimated to be about $400,000 for a traffic signal. What I want to bring to you in the next couple of weeks is the possibility of adding a four-way stop sign with crosswalks. This will definitely affect the flow of traffic, but it'll probably... It'll make that, at least that intersection, safe for children to cross. I think the concern was with the additional homes and kids crossing that busy intersection. There was concern about that. So, the next couple of weeks, we'll bring you... Bring to you a proposal of maybe a four-way traffic stop intersection with crosswalks.
Frank, real quick.
Yes, sir.
On that study... That study that QK did, it also included the project that's north of HA. And that also included that estimated traffic flow. That could come out of that.
So, you need the actual cars in order to do the study?
Right.
And so, until... So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna continue to do the study as more and more homes are built and traffic increases. We will redo the study until we get the numbers. But right now, it doesn't... We meet them during peak times, but it's not a steady number throughout the day.
Maybe after the project's completed.
After the first phase, yes.
Right.
I have a question.
Yes.
And this possibly is a question for you, Nathan. Is it possible to ask the developer to foot some of the bill for traffic intersections seeing as how part of that new traffic is due to the development over there?
Well, so, I believe we inherit the impact fees, you know, which go to streets and that kind of stuff. So, we... Correct if I'm wrong, but we do... They do pay impact fees for every house that's sold. So, we will have a, you know, a pool of money that will be developed that will go towards paying for street improvements, for traffic signals, stuff like that.
That didn't answer my question.
But yeah, to initially...
They pay impact fees. The fee we collect from them is the impact fees that they pay per unit.
Okay, my question was if... Is it possible to have the developer pay for the traffic signal? Because we're allowing them in our city, and part of that increased traffic by a school is due to their homes being built. Why can't we ask them to pay for the traffic signal?
So, we can ask them, but they're not required to. So, we could ask. It'd be an ask.
I think we should ask.
So, we can ask them.
And that's something that should've been done more back in the planning phase of the project. But, you know, it is a very good question.
I have an additional follow-up question, then. Is it possible to stop a project that's already going if they say no?
No.
Is there anything we could do if they said no?
Is there anything you could do? So, council approved the project? So, they're moving forward and then... They have... We have a legal contract.
I figure I should just ask these questions in the open because I don't know the answer. And I would really like to get them to help us pay for this traffic signal.
Noted.
Would the rest of council like to help give consensus for that? So, it's just not noted, and it's actually done?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, can I ask? Just to clarify what you're actually wanting to do, then? So, I know what I'm...
I would like to kindly ask the developer if they would be willing to pay for all or some of the... And to what extent of the traffic signal? Please explain that we have schoolchildren. And additionally, families will likely be brought to that location to purchase homes because of the beautiful location next to that school. And I'm sure it's in their best interest to have a very safe intersection to help sell their homes.
Yeah.
And I hope the city can help relay that to them.
I was looking at it. So, your question is to have the city to go back and ask the developer if they would help... Help assist partially or fully to foot the bill to put the traffic light on?
Yes, please.
Okay, and the crosswalks.
Should that have been put in place before we came to this?
Probably.
Okay.
But, once again, as I said earlier, is that's part of the planning process. So, these are things maybe in the future. But, I don't know. City Attorney, what can we do?
You can provide consensus at this point, but I don't want to have this conversation continue since it's not an agendized item.
Okay.
Understood.
I... I'm okay with it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and then, last, this is myself. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Just a brief update on... We've been using an organization out of Hanford called Proteus. And it's a state-funded program for drought relief workers and stuff. I wanted to give a brief update. But in the last two and a half months, the city of Lemoore through Proteus has received 2,214 man-hours. That costs $0 to the city. Those individuals have worked on underfunded LLMDs. They're continuing to do that as we speak. They spent 400 man-hours in downtown, cleaning up in front of local businesses and weeding the little square sections, planters out in front of businesses. And they're also plenty busy in public works, painting takes, hydrants, cleaning solar fields, and weed abatement. We're ordering another bunch to try to weed abate the railroad all the way through town, end to end. So, currently, though, this is great for us. It saves money and lets us do more with less. But unfortunately, right now, the program ends September 1st, pending more funding. So, as we see the huge benefit of it, there'll be an abrupt stop if the program ends. So, it's a Band-Aid, not a cure.
Can you better explain the program? I'm still not sure what the program is that we're...
So, the state funds workers for any drought relief-type thing. So, you can use them for streets, repairs, crack fills, anything basically from the dry, damp weather. They fund each individual. I believe it's $14,000 or $16,000. And as a government agency, you can request people to come to your town and work. And they basically cover all their workers' comp, all their... So, it's basically a workers' program. And we currently have... They were actually showcased on Channel 21 News here last week. So, that's something we continue to look in and do. And right now, we currently have nine persons, and we're trying to get more on board.
So, which state program is it that goes through?
I'd have to get that for you, Ms. Blair.
I'd like to know. And then, we're still under drought conditions, correct?
Yes.
So, we still kind of qualify under the purview of drought help?
Yep. That's it.
How many hours was it?
2,214.
All free?
All free. Nice. Well, we do drive them around in city trucks to drop them off. You know, we might have three or four people in a truck getting from one place to another to get them there to do the work. And then, we go check on them, bring water and things, and pick them up on their breaks and lunches. But yeah.
Thank you.
For the most part, it's part of the overhead.
Okay, any others? Reports?
That's it.
All right, we will go to move to consent calendar. Ms. Blair, you asked for three dash two to be pulled for further discussion. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I'd like three dash three pulled just so that it can be explained to the public what it is.
So, we have three dash one... Or three dash two, three dash three. Is there any others on the consent calendar? So, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar except for three dash two and three dash three?
I'm motion.
I'll second.
So, a motion by Mr. Neal and a second by Ms. Blair to approve the consent calendar. Those are items three, one, and three dash four. So, Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Chedester?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Consent calendar is approved. So, we will now go to item three dash two.
Okay, so, I'll take that. So, good evening, Mayor and council members. So, this was a cost-sharing program we brought that was... Had $100,000 budgeted to allow a cost-sharing to repair broken sidewalks out in front of... On private property, essentially. So, council at last directions gave it the go-ahead. We're back for the second reading with the caveat that we advertised the program for two months prior to awarding anybody access to the program.
I just wanted to make a comment so that my objection has... So, you know why. I still don't see any safeguards to prevent one family from reaping, you know, reaping the benefits of this in front of their property, then going to their brother or their sister or their cousin. And I would like to see some sort of safeguard to see that, you know, it's all of our community and not just a few select few. So, that's why I'm gonna object to this. I'm done.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council.
I'll make a motion to approve item three dash two as proposed.
One second.
Motion by Mr. Chedester, second by Mr. Neal to approve item three dash two as written. Mr. Chedester?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote aye. Motion is passed. Thank you. Okay, so, we'll now pull item three dash three. That's Approval Resolution 2018 dash 37. It's Biennial Review of Conflict of Interest Code.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, citizens. The law requires that the city review its conflict of interest code every two years. And any changes that need to be made is adopted by resolution of the council. This year, I believe there were two changes. At the time, the conflict of interest code was approved last... Two years ago, there wasn't an assistant city manager position. So, that position's been added. We also noted that while I file as your city attorney, conflict of interest forms, it wasn't on there, so we decided to make it required. Those are the two basically changes from last time. Basically, it's a list of all the employees of the city and consultants and their requirements for filing Form 700s. And I'll take any questions.
No, I just wanted that explained.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, bring it back to council for a vote. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, so, there's a motion by Ms. Blair and a second by Mr. Chedester. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Chedester?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Your item is passed. Thank you. Move to item four dash one, public hearing. This is a public hearing. It's Resolution 2018 dash 38. Approving a ballot measure text to be submitted to the voters related to transactions and use tax of 1% to be designated as measure blank to be submitted to voters on November 6th, 2018, in the statewide general election, requesting Kings County elections to conduct the election and requesting consolidation of the election. This is Mr. Olson.
Okay, good evening, and Mayor and council members. So, bringing back a proposed 1% transaction tax as we discussed previously. So, the 1% transaction and use taxes on all goods sold in the city limits with 100% of the revenues coming back to the city's general fund. It is the equivalent of an extra 1 cent for every $1 spent in Lemoore. This resolution requires a 2/3 vote to go on the ballot in November. So, that means four yes votes from council this evening. Approval tonight would only put the measure on the ballot for citizens to vote on in November. It is not an approval to raise the transaction tax 1%. So, just wanted to be clear that we're not voting tonight to actually increase the taxes. Just puts it on the ballot. So, why now? Okay, so, on June 5th, council directed staff to bring back a general tax option, which this is what we're doing tonight. Revenues are not keeping up with expenditures. 12.56 was projected revenues this year. With 12.8 in expenses, creates an approximate shortfall of about $282,000 for this operating year, which was covered by the general fund reserves to balance the budget. This current budget maintains current services but does not allow for growth or improvements. It's kind of holding the status quo. Couple of other things, why now? SB 1 funds are in jeopardy on the November ballot. So, if Proposition 6 is successful, that would mean about $457,000 the city would lose for street road repair and maintenance that we would have to find elsewhere. And then, opportunity zones, which a few months were passed through. The closest opportunity zone to Lemoore is south of Jackson Avenue, which is significantly outside of the city limits. So, we missed that. That was kind of a partial answer to redevelopment agencies and whatnot, but we did not meet any of the criteria to become an opportunity zone. There it goes. So, why are we doing this? So, first and foremost, public safety. The 2018-19 budget, as I said earlier, maintains a status quo in areas except for public safety. And in the police department, we added two headcounts, one officer and one records technician. It's been, I think, 20 years since we've had a singular records technician in case files. We need an additional for that and then, one other officer on the street. That being said, data from the Public Policy Institute of California will show that one additional officer on the street reduces crime, 1.3% of violent crimes, and 4.2 property crimes per year. So, by averaging one additional officer. Pardon me?
Was our crime rate on the rise?
No, our crime rate is actually, thank God, on the downward trend.
I see.
So, that's a good thing. So, so that's, that's a good thing. But nationally, they say one officer helps reduce it even more. The national officer per thousand populations of cities above twenty-five thousand or more is one point nine officers per thousand in the population. Lemoore's currently at one point three officers per one thousand, so I think it speaks volumes to the dedication to public safety and the leadership over there for the results we're having. Also, fire added an admin head during the last fiscal budget year. Put that on here because that was something that wasn't funded last year. We put it in the budget. We're continuing to fund it this year. Again, crime is trending downward and with the population growth and additional subdivisions and planning and redevelopment, more officers and fire volunteers will be needed to keep our city safe.
Excuse me, are we needing a public safety tax to help fund these new positions?
No. There's multiple ways. The direction from council was to bring a general tax, so that's what we're here talking about tonight is a general tax. It can be funded with another So parks and rec, this is solely funded by general fund dollars. City maintains many parks and offers a variety of programs, making the department a jewel of the city. When people talk about Lemoore, they talk about our volunteers, our PD, and our parks and rec. The municipal complex on Cinnamon is, is just nice to have, so we want to be able to maintain and enhance that experience for our community. We've recently gained twenty-two acre park. The soccer complex over on Nineteenth Avenue became the city's responsibility July second. And a long tradition of promoting youth sports, a lot of people in this room played there as kids and have grandkids that are playing there now. So that's an additional property we need to maintain. And part of the budget process, not knowing that was gonna go through, we actually froze one of the positions we currently have to help balance out our budget. And as I mentioned earlier, they too are using Proteus workers to close the gap on underserviced areas in the parks.
Excuse me, how much of that is dedicated towards the dog park that needs ADA compliance?
How, this here?
Yes.
What's the, I'm, what's the question?
How much, how many of our, how much of our resources are going to be dedicated towards that, addressing that situation?
So I would have to defer to Jason, but if I'm not mistaken, there's like a crew of five that probably does Kings Lions Park. Five plus one? So it's five plus one. So six people that maintain the park over at Kings Lions. And they rotate the parks different days of the week. It's the same people hitting all the parks, they just have to get to them on the rotation. Okay, there you go. Also, secondly, the golf course. So this is another one. We all love the golf course, but it is subsidized by the general fund. It currently has two loans against it, a general fund loan and a Lemoore Recreation or Redevelopment Agency loan. So right now, for twenty eighteen through twenty twenty, it's a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollar payment per annum that the, this, the play at the golf course doesn't cover that. So that comes right out of the general fund. In twenty twenty, a few short years out, both those loans come together for one final payment, and the payment in that year blooms to four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. And then it goes down to three hundred thousand a year from twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six. But in short, the, the golf course has outstanding debt against it, legacy debt of two point four million, that's due through twenty twenty-seven. So when we start talking about the balance and stuff, this, the golf course, as much as we love it, it, it's quite a, it could be quite a drain on many taxpayers in the city that don't actually use it. But it's, it's a nice to have. Economic development, so incentives are needed to promote growth. You've been seeing, you know, guys coming in here, everybody wants a little bit of something from the city to come in, and, and that's pretty much the norm now. It's who's giving away the best deals and people come in, that's part of it. But zero dollars are budgeted for incentives this year. Any general fund incentive given will reduce the general fund revenues. Deals or agreements that are completed today can take several years to produce financial benefits. So later today, we're gonna actually enter into an option agreement, that we may enter into an option agreement that's a short-term solution, so the developer can start advertising eighty-three acres to try to start getting business in here. And we'll be coming back, if that goes through, then the actual development agreement should be coming in August. So, but there's some incentives that are built into that one. Okay, and then downtown needs assistance to draw people in and stipulate, and stimulate business retention. I don't think anybody in here disagrees with that, we all know it. It's just a matter of partnering up and finding ways to get the foot traffic downtown and people shopping local. Going back to the economic development, there's currently two draft plans that we're working on getting ready to bring to council. One is more of a development outline that requires zero dollars, that one will go no matter what, but it's really focused around downtown revitalization, survey and cataloging the infill spaces and helping to partner to get those businesses out there so people know they're there, and potentially working with, with the owners to see if they're willing to do some kind of wheeling and dealing to make an incentive to get people into those buildings. Incentives, there's incentives out there that don't cost the, the general fund money, such as grants and loan programs, very low-interest loans, and then cow recycle. If you're, we are in a cow recycle zone, so if you're doing, making products out of recycled materials, there's loans for three million bucks that have very small interest rates to get you going and get business. So we'll start focusing on some of those things. Employees, we did class, we did a class and comp study was performed a while back. Sure y'all remember that. The financial gaps were identified but not addressed at the time. Council made, council and staff came, or staff brought forth a plan to council that was accepted as an interim step taken on salary and benefits to help shore that gap. And then during the bargaining unit, unit talks, the city did commit to going to the ballot for a sales tax to assist in general fund revenues. We talked about it, yes. So we're delivering that. Next one. Reserves, so the city has a target of twenty-five percent reserves today, increasing to thirty-five percent within five years passed by council on five seventeen sixteen. So basically, when that was passed, they gave us five years to get the general fund reserves up to a thirty-five percent rate. We are currently beyond that, we're at forty-four percent, but that is due to a reduction in capital improvement projects that we were able to send a major influx of money over to the, to the general fund reserves. But had we gone forward with that project, or those projects, we would be sitting with a general fund reserve of around twenty percent today. So the recap on the benefits, you know, if, if this goes to the voter and this resolution passes, you know, the big areas of concentration would be public safety, parks and rec, our employees, and economic development. The, the plans would come out, the meetings would take place, the oversight committees would be assembled upon a resolution being passed. We kind of need that step hurdled to spend the time and effort and the staff to get things going and get the community outreach going. Here's just a quick snapshot of surrounding towns and their tax rates. So Salma Visalia, Corcoran Sanger, Dinuba Ridley, they're all over, eight, I think eight fours the lowest, up to eight seven five. Then there's Lemoore and Hanford sitting at seven and a quarter. And so that's where we're at, just wanted to point that out. That's really it. I know that nobody in this room is dying to pay another tax. Okay, I being one of them. But something has, has got to give. The retail environment is not what it was ten years ago, and I don't think anybody in here can argue that. So we need to find a good balance, but it, it's gonna take a partnership between city and the merchants and the downtown to make this thing work. It's not a singular issue, it's a multiple-pronged issue that needs to be treated as such. So, you know, without a sales tax or without this transaction tax, would we be okay for the next year or two? We can sprint by, but you're not gonna see improved services or better services, but we'll, we'll manage. We'll find ways to get grant money if possible. We'll find ways to continue to bring in workers that can give us a benefit for nothing. But the long-range goal, there's, there's some handwriting on the wall a little bit, so that's why I'm coming to you tonight to say that, you know, I'd like for council to pass this resolution and let the voters decide. Thank you.
Can we make a council comment?
Questions? So I have a question. What, we are at the state minimum, seven point two five right now. That's the, the most that any city can, can apply according to state law. How much of that seven point two five does actually come to the city? Because I think people need to understand that not all of that comes through. That's broken up. It goes to county, it goes to a lot of other entities. So let's just say for, break it down in a hundred dollars.
So for every hundred dollars, so the sales tax is seven point two five percent. So if you spend a hundred dollars, there's gonna be seven dollars and twenty-five cents in tax paid. Of that hundred dollars, only one percent goes to the city. So you will pay, the city receives one dollar for every hundred dollars you spend on sales tax. One dollar per hundred.
The problem with the sales tax is that it is very regressive, meaning that the poorer you are, a higher percentage of your pay will go to it. Even if you have a hundred dollars in your pocket, Mayor, if you have ten dollars in your pocket, and you both go to a storefront, and after you buy your item and taxes added up, you each owe a dollar. Now Nathan, you'll have ninety-nine dollars in your pocket, and Mayor, you'll have nine dollars in your pocket, meaning that ten percent of your income went to the tax while only one percent of your income went to the tax. So the poorer you are, the less money you make, the higher percentage of your wage is gonna go into that tax. And those are the very people we want the most have pocket change to go and purchase retail. If forty percent of our GDP is based on retail sales, is based on consumerism, then the poorer you are, we want pocket change. We want them to be able to go spend locally. Having them go put money into a sales tax for, I'm sorry, employees that we don't need right now is really, and, a bad idea.
Right now, it's time for questions, Ms. Blair. Let's ask questions. We'll all have time to make comments. So are there any other questions right now?
Yes, uh, you guys know I'm a Facebook fanatic. I did a, I had, I had some of my constituents do an input on what they think about the sales tax. And when I, when I done that, I got a lot of notes. But then I heard some good news today. I, I take it, six dollars a month that we'll be paying if it's one percent for sales tax. If I'm wrong about crunching them numbers, somebody gave me the crunches on them numbers and I went there. But then I heard a business owner, a while back, told me he's gonna be paying six thousand dollars. So I wanna know what the business owners want to do, because let's talk about everybody. Let's get everybody involved. It might look good for certain people, but the business owners, how are we gonna bring in businesses in here? They're gonna start going to Hanford, they know it's racist. And so right now, that's where I'm at right now. Now until you lead me to the other direction, tell me something different, that's where I'm gonna go with the people and the community and the business owners and see what they want. Thank you.
I have no questions. I'd just like to go to the people and see what they got to say.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Chedester?
No.
I have a final question.
Go ahead.
Why is it that we jumped straight to one percent instead of adding, you know, point five or point two five? Why is it that we jumped straight to one percent?
That was, well, based on the numbers and based on underlying budgets and debt coming up ahead. That is a good number that gives us the opportunity to get economic development in here, and it had a sunset date. And council direct, I don't know if, I don't, I can't, I think they might have directed it at one percent, but if not, hey, I'd be more than happy if you guys approved it and wanted to change it to a half. But there's still, that could leave the door open to have to come back again. Try not to come back again. One and done.
I, I have a question. Ms. Blair mentioned about staff that we don't need. We added staff to our public safety departments. The, the more volunteer fire department, we saw a need there, so we added an admin assistant for them to help them with their record-keeping. Chief Smith, if you don't mind, could you explain why we need those two additional people that you asked for in your budget?
I'm more concerned with the additional officer more than the records keeper. If our, if our public safety record has been going down in crime, why the need for a new officer when we can't, when we obviously need a tax to pay for it?
So to answer your question, the records tech position was basically under allocated for twenty years. So we added that position this year. The police officer position, I actually asked for three, and that was through the budget process. We cut it down to two, and then we compromised on one. And I'd just like to say that the numbers that Nathan shared earlier with council, the state average is two point five per one thousand population. Lemoore's one point three. The national average for cities our size, twenty-five thousand and above around us is one point nine. And in my opinion, for me, my job is to reduce crime and to do everything I can with the resources that you provide. Since I came to Lemoore, I've added three full-time positions, and this, this year, we added a fourth. Of those four positions, only one was funded by the general fund. So I've done a good job of going out there, finding funding for those positions. Those funding sources have dried up. So when I ask for positions, it's with every intent to make our community safer, because I believe that every resident in the city of Lemoore deserves a safe community. And when you look at people wanting to move to your community and develop in your community and bring business to your community, they want a safe community and they want opportunity for recreation and good parks. So for me, I'm not doing my job if we're not reducing crime. And I'm gonna, my, my vow to you and every resident in the city is to reduce crime every year, like I told you. For violent crime, my target, zero. Is that possible? No, it's impossible. But I'm not gonna stop until we continue to decrease crime. So we should never be happy with status quo, because one violent crime of your victims, too many. So hopefully that explains and answers your question.
It does. So another question. So you mentioned the ratio of police officers per capita?
One thousand.
Per one thousand. So what, can you repeat those again? And what, what is recommended by the professional organizations that you, that you know, and you're, as a professional in law enforcement, what is, what is the recommended ratio and where do we stand in comparison to that?
Well, the California average is two point five. And as you know, every community is unique, and every community hopefully lives within their means. So two point five is unrealistic for our city, knowing what I know and, and knowing, you know, what is available to us, because then we would not have any other services in our city, and that's not fair. That's not a balanced approach. What I'm asking for is a continued commitment to, you know, make our community safe. And one point three is less than two point five. It's significantly less. And the national average at one point nine, it's significantly less. I'm not gonna say that, you know, if this doesn't happen, I'm gonna continue to do everything that I can, and I know the men and women in the police department are gonna continue to do everything they can. It's a partnership with our community, and we have a phenomenal community partnership. So we're gonna continue to do everything we can to keep our community safe. But at some point, we have to grow. Our population is growing, our, our rooftops are growing, and we need to continue to stay up with that. We should never, you know, be satisfied with crime in the numbers that we have, so.
Is it safe to say that there's really no number you'd accept but zero? Is that a fair thing to say? I mean, you, you would, if possible, you would, you would fund as many as possible. I mean, because you always have that goal of less and less crime. We already were on the decline.
No, that's, that's not true, because I asked for three, and during negotiations, I call it negotiations, but in reality, I was one of the first ones to say, hey, listen, we need to reduce police officer position to help the budget. Nathan and the rest of the budget team will say that. And I know that I need to be reasonable, and I need to be fair and balanced with the rest of the city's staff request. We have a very fortunate city to have a volunteer fire department that does a phenomenal job with the resources they get, but they need equipment. They're growing. They need training that costs money. So public safety's important, but there are also many essential needs in our community that need to keep up with public safety. Our streets are in, you know, disrepair. Our parks need more attention. So there are many areas, and I understand that. And I wanna be fair when I say that, that I wish I had three and I got one, and I'm very thankful to get one officer, so.
Do we know how many officers are in cities like Colinga and Avonale and Corcoran? How many officers do they have in comparison to how many we have?
I have not looked at that. I do know that Colinga just laid off seven full-time officers due to general budget woes.
Because they couldn't afford more.
They laid off seven?
Seven.
So it happens when you pay for employees ahead of time that you can't really afford.
Okay. So how about violent crime? Let's talk about violent crime. We had three very high-profile homicides this year.
Yeah, two thousand seventeen.
In two thousand seventeen. I'm not sat, zero is the only number we can accept for violent crime.
I agree with that.
It's, I'm not satisfied with anything but zero. I don't think anybody should be. And if that's gonna help, if having another police officer is a step in the right direction, then I don't see, I don't argue with it.
So any, above any other program, anything else we allocate our funds to from the general fund, above everything else, the highest priority is until we have zero and have as many officers as possible.
It's, it's a philosophical statement, and hopefully the rest of you understand what I'm trying to say.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? No.
Thank you.
I do have a question though for the city manager. On June fifth, council directed staff to bring back a general tax option. My vote was that vote that brought it back. Okay. What I asked though is, is I asked for us to take a look and determine if we needed, what we needed, what we really needed. I didn't ask for one percent. I didn't ask for, I asked it to come back and tell me and show me what we actually needed. So I just wanna make sure that's on the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I have another question. If I may, I see some business owners in here. I wanna, I want, we got public safety in here. Let me, could I hear some, a business owner come in? Okay.
You still gonna sit in?
Okay, okay, all right. Good. Because I, I wanna hear what they have to say about this as well.
So this is a general tax, correct?
Yes, it would require fifty percent plus one.
As opposed to a special tax? Can you explain what a special tax would be?
A special tax would take sixty-six point six seven percent, and it is a very specific purpose of what those funds would be used for. So if you pass the special tax for public safety, those dollars would all have to be spent on fire and/or police department.
But in this case, because it is a general tax, any, any department that is funded through our general fund could reap the benefits of this, is that correct?
Yes. And one of the reasons the general tax was preferred by, well, guys like me is the need changes every year. You know, it's not a solid plan yet, but the volunteer fire department is asking for an additional ten bodies. It's harder to get some people out of work these days to make calls. So, you know, ten additional bodies would be for that, that, they might not need ten bodies every year. So the following year, you might be able to shuffle some money over to parks and rec. But that's why we can do oversight, we can get downtown business owners involved, and we can't spend it at will. I mean, council, staff has to come forth with a budget, with a I mean, council, staff has to come forth with a budget, with a spending plan. Council has to approve it. So, yeah, and it requires an oversight.
So the ballot measure or the, the?
The resolution.
The resolution as it stands today?
No. Counsel, the ordinance, which you would pa, you would pass a resolution to place the matter on the ballot. The resolution would go to the King's County Elections Office. And the information on the resolution is what would appear on the ballot. Other documents would have to be written, including an argument for, et cetera, as defined in the resolution. But you would also need to pass an ordinance prior to the election. And the ordinance has been attached and is in fact on the agenda tonight. So if you pass the resolution, you will go to item four point two for the first reading of the ordinance that is being proposed. And that ordinance does include a oversight provision. So it's a general tax, and you can't, you, you have to keep it very general, so you don't make it a special tax. But you have, the ordinance anticipates having a yearly financial audit, as well as establishing an oversight committee to determine the use of the funds. Or make recommendations to the council for the use of the funds. The decision would ultimately be with the council.
I'm looking at, could I go back to rewind? Can we rewind back, I don't know if this council was there, but we talked, and we had a custard plan on the golf course. And at one time, we was trying to sell the golf course to Tati Palace. I don't know if anybody can recall that. But I don't know what happened to the custard plan. We're still hurting in that. And how long have this golf course been here? A long time. It's a lot of things that I'm looking at that, just like the seniors. How much did we supposed to give them with that CBG, uh, CCG grant? What was that?
It was one point one million.
And, 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 and they didn't get what they, to me, they're not getting justice, justice as well. So I'm looking at this, every year, I never once, I put this on record, I never once went against the police department. Whatever the police department, it was their wish, they got what they wanted. I'm all about a safe haven fire department. I'm all about the fire department. And so all you have to do is look at my voting record. I'm not against that. What I do want, I just want businesses to come in here. I don't want them to be ran down. That's what I'm looking at right now. So I'm not against, I'm not going against the grain. I'm just looking out for everybody. All right, thank you.
Well, excuse me, sir, we'll have public comment here in a second. Okay, sorry. That's okay. I know, we're gonna have a lot of public comment. So let's go to page twelve of the presentation, the sales tax rate that talks about the cities that are near, near us. So Hanford and Lamois are the only ones that are still at the low, at the state minimum, seven point two five. Now, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Hanford is bringing something forward for a half-cent sales tax, a special tax? Is that correct?
So we looked into it further. There was a proposal for a half-cent sales tax to restore old buildings downtown. But it, it appears that that is not gonna have enough traction to get on the ballot. But they have had several attempts at sales tax increases, is that valid?
So then, our competitor, so to speak, if you look at them, and I, when I say competitors, talking about the cities that are reasonably close for people to go elsewhere to do their shopping or buying. So at seven point two five, which we are, we would still be among the lowest, if I'm not mistaken. Selma is at eight point, eight point four seven five. Visalia is at eight and a half. They recently tax, passed a general sales tax measure, I know. Corcoran is at eight point two five. They recently passed a one-point sales tax measure in June. Sanger is at eight point seven two five. Dinuba is at eight point five. Reedley is at eight point four seven five. So we are still, we would still be competitive if this were to pass, I would say. Is that correct?
If you're looking at, surely just on the sales tax rate of surrounding communities, we'd be on the low end still. With the exception of Hanford.
I have a question. And, um, no.
President seven nine seven.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, to ask a question? Okay. I know we're talking about these other, other towns close around us here, but, I don't know if you would, you know, agree, or is that, if somebody wants to go buy some groceries, they're gonna go to Hanford? Or they're gonna go to Lamois, and they're not gonna go to Reedley, and they're not gonna go to Dinuba. If I want a car, maybe I'll go to Selma, you know, Visalia. So, you know, we gotta, you know, so my thing is, is the day-to-day perishables, are the things that we purchase. You know? What, what do you think, have you, have you, have you have any information to say that, that, that it is a fact that, you know, if, if, you know, that, that, that? Because we really can't say that people from Lamois, or people from the surrounding area of Lamois, or the city of Lamois, will go to these towns, Selma, Visalia, Corcoran, Sanger, Dinuba, and Reedley. You know, and, and, and we're losing, we're really losing, losing people to them. I think we're losing more, we're bleeding more to Hanford, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
I mean, I do, I do appreciate this here as a, as a basis, you know? But, you know, but, but, um, you know, I really look more towards the Hanford.
Yeah, so, no, you're right. We do, we do bleed to Hanford. This is kind of just for a reference to see what else is going on within the valley. You know, whether we stay at seven two five or go to eight two five, that, I'm, I'm not gonna drive to Hanford to save one percent on sales tax. I don't know about anybody else, but it ain't worth it, I'll spend more on gas than I will on my twenty-dollar purchase.
Well, and that's fine, I just wanna make sure that I, I understand this completely, and, you know, and hear the people, what the people have to say. And so, thank you.
I have another quick question. Just, when we went to hi, to go over our salary increases, we looked at all of the surrounding areas to get a gauge if we were in the right realm of what salary and at what base pay and what trajectory, we did all of that. And here we are, talking about a public safety tax. I would think we would wanna at least have started with knowing how many officers other towns have.
Counsel, I'm sorry, yeah, we're not talking, tonight, and we're not talking about a public safety tax.
Okay.
It's a general tax. It is not a public safety tax.
That money would go towards any department, shouldn't we know what other departments in other cities of our size also do? If we're gonna compare their tax base, if they have a lot more programs than we do, their tax base may be higher. Maybe they have a Boys and Girls Club, maybe they have a YMCA that they're funding. That's, doesn't tell me what, what our community holds, if this is what we can hold, how much we're asking people to pay into.
So we did look at FTEs on a citywide basis, not departmentally, but citywide. And we're pretty much in line on a FTE based on residences, surrounding communities. There's some that are little, the, the Sanger, I believe, is quite a bit higher, they've got quite a bit more revenue.
So we're right online without the tax? Or right online?
Like, right now, if you look at our full-time equivalents doing the work of the city versus a Hanford, then we're all very close in how many people were employed in our community.
We're very close.
That's, yeah, that's just, that's the reality of today.
And we're gonna look at the population of Hanford.
Yeah, you take, you take the population divided by how many people are working it, and you get an equivalent. There's one FTE for like four point three people in Hanford, and I think there's, I think it's one employee for every four point six people in Lamois.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Can we go to the public comment? Okay, at this time, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and invite those of you who would like to speak on this matter to come forward. I do have some cards. We'll start with those first. Let's see. Frances Perkins. I knew you wanted to go first.
Okay, you're right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Frances Perkins, and I am the general manager at the Best Western here in Lamois. As you know, my business collects an entirely different kind of tax that goes to the general fund. But I'm here tonight because an increase in sales tax indirectly impacts my business. Just like many businesses here in Lamois, we compete every single day with Hanford for that, for our share of business. And me and my team, we work extremely hard to capture new business and to retain our guests, to retain them, you know? Make them stay here in Lamois. I just want you to be very mindful that when overnight travelers stay here, they come from all over the country. When they stay in Lamois, they're buying gas for their rental car. They're eating at the restaurants we refer them to here in Lamois. You know, they're shopping, you know, to buy groceries and their daily essentials while they're here. So I just ask that you keep that in mind, 'cause we don't need to give them another reason to go to Hanford. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeff Garcia.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor, council members, city manager, thank you for the opportunity. I just wanna first say that I respect all of you and your positions up there. I know it's not easy to make these tough decisions. Having said so, with all due respect, Nathan, I don't feel like you made a compelling argument to raise sales tax one percent in the city of Lamois. I know we saw a great slideshow, but you said yourself, the city is, is holding its own. It may be facing some issues in the future, but I don't think a one percent sales tax, kind of thrown out there, up high in the sky figure, makes sense to me. If you know what you need, then ask for it. And I think Mr. Brown mentioned that, when he asked for this to come back, he didn't ask for a one percent sales tax. He asked for it to be studied and to give a realistic number and percentage that would, you know, be reasonable. One percent is not reasonable. Most of you know Rudy Salas, he, he voted against this, the gas tax, for a reason, for the same reason that it was, uh, it's gonna be a hardship on the people for this community and for the people in the valley. He voted against his, his party, but he voted for what he felt was right. And I hope that each and every one of you do the same thing tonight by voting against the one percent sales tax. And as a business owner, you know, we, and consumer, you know, we all have to bear this burden of, of sales tax, whether it's seven and a quarter or eight and a quarter. You know, it is, it does impact us in our, in our daily business. Because everything we purchase is sales tax, everything we sell is sales tax. And we compete not only with Hanford, which is our biggest competitor. People aren't gonna go to Corcoran to purchase goods, for the most part, they're gonna go to Hanford. It's the nearest neighbor with the most resources. So our, our competitor is Hanford, and online, you know, we compete online with retail every day. So by adding this one percent sales tax on business, not only takes us out of the game with Hanford, but it, it makes it much more difficult to compete with online businesses as well. So if you want to increase businesses in, in Lamois and maintain your, your sales tax base, I would definitely encourage you to vote against it. If you increase it any more than it is now, or definitely by a percent, you're gonna discourage local businesses to, um, from expanding. You can discourage businesses to coming to town, and you're gonna discourage consumers from shopping local. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Ward.
All right, Amy Ward, Lamois Chamber of Commerce, dear mayor and city council members. I stand here today to publicly oppose the placement of a one percent sales tax increase on the November ballot. I'm also here to represent the majority of chamber business members in Lamois that help generate the revenue that provides the city services we have all come to love. According to the proposed resolution, Lamois has experienced and continues to experience a critical decline in revenues. We all acknowledge that the local economy is suffering. During slow economic downturn, we cannot afford to increase the tax load that our consumers carry. A raise in taxes here locally is essentially punishing those who continue to be loyal to our local businesses. What we are essentially saying is, thank you for shopping in Lamois. Here are additional taxes that you will not find in Hanford. Please come again. Our consumers will shop elsewhere. This past week, my team and I have reached out to nearly every businessman member we have here in Lamois. And while we did not speak to every single one of them, we did speak with the majority and have yet to find a single business in favor of this increase. The comments are the same, how do they expect us to stay in business? Or, I'm doing everything I can to compete with Hanford and Fresno. Or my personal favorite quote, I guess there really is more in Lamois, more taxes and more empty buildings. Today, we were not even supposed to be here. The city had planned on going dark this month, and the chamber planned an event. You may not know this, but currently, two hundred or so chamber members and their guests are at Surf Ranch. In fact, the mixer is going pretty amazing, I'm kind of sad I had to leave. There is a renewed sense of hype. Our businesses can sense the potential for growth. Hashtag shop and surf Lamois has a nice ring to it. So imagine my shock when I hear that a meeting has been placed on the calendar and not because the proposed tax increase has been thoroughly researched for a significant amount of time, but because the lack of time meant we had to rush through a study session and meet today so that we do not miss the deadline. Our own lack of planning meant that we could not hold adequate study sessions and take the time to responsibly review all our options or properly engage our community. We now have to rush through, approve this today if we have any hopes of placing this on our ballots. Our citizens and consumers deserve more than our throw anything at the wall and hope something sticks. I'm not saying we should never, ever discuss raising taxes. I'm saying that our city has a reputation of knee-jerk reactions, and our economy is suffering. So today, today is not the day to rush anything. Just let the voters decide is something else that I've heard repeatedly. But sadly, even suggesting we place this on the ballot sends a very clear message to our current and prospective businesses. When things get tough, we will sacrifice the businesses first. Why would any business want to stay open or build here when we have less people than Hanford and now potentially higher taxes? This does not make for a pro-business environment. We deserve long-term strategic planning. I know we are in a deficit. Our own chamber money was cut last year. But we are not so far gone that we cannot take the time to responsibly form a plan that doesn't require our businesses to suffer and doesn't place the burden squarely on the consumers who already paid far too much in taxes. Simply put, our website, our website claims that we are a city with a pro-business attitude. An aggressive attempt at a one percent sales tax increase does not support this claim. At the end of the day, please do not try to make, to take an estimated one point nine million dollars out of our citizens' pockets because city council was rushed into this decision. Our businesses, citizens, and consumers deserve better. And this is a list of businesses that are currently at Surf Ranch that do not support. The end. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, who else do we have? I think that's all the cards. Is there anyone that would like to speak? If you didn't put a card, that's okay, you can still come up and talk. Just please state your name. Okay, come on up to the microphone, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate Ms. Holly Blair on her involvement with the council. I like her attitude. Two, question is, the, the greens at the golf course, is there a reason why we can't make them greener? Keep it green, that'll bring in money.
Exactly.
That's a very good point.
That's the question.
You're a golfer? You a golfer? Oh, darn.
But I know that I would bring in more.
Thank you. Thanks. Someone else?
Jim Marvin, eight oh five Eaton in Lamois. And I'm going to go against what I've heard so far. I think I understand what the people have said, but I'm gonna go the other way. I've been a newspaper guy for a lot of years. I've lived in ten states, and I've lived in a lot of small towns like Lamois. I've never seen a better town than Lamois is. You guys sitting up there to the, to the poor business people that we have, I, I feel, I do feel sorry for them because I owned newspapers, and of course, that paid taxes, a lot more taxes than sales tax. But what I'm here to tell you, that you look around Lamois, and you see out there, a little west of town, something called West Hills. And you think about the millions of dollars that bond money put out there. And the last time I heard, there's four thousand full-time students in Lamois out there. Those, those people could be there, I suppose, but I don't think they would be if, that people hadn't spent the money to build those buildings. And if you haven't been out there lately, you certainly should go. The, they, the, the students out there are the biggest industry that Lamois has. I don't know, you could argue maybe the cheese people, but I think maybe the, maybe the kids are, are better. I was a volunteer firefighter for seventeen years, and so I have a feeling for our wonderful fire department that when they want, if they want ten more fire volunteers, I think they should be giving them maybe twenty, maybe fifty. Because they're, this year, California's gonna burn, and some of our guys are gonna be out there trying to, trying to stop it. So I would... So I would suggest that you vote for, that you do, uh, vote yes for, put it up and let the citizens vote for it after you guys are through. I, I don't, it's not an easy spot. I've been where you were. I've been on the council, not here, but in other places. But I expect to be run out of town on the rail for what I've said so far. Adios.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marvin. Thank you.
Gary Smith, Mission Drive. I was stationed at Naval Air Station Lemoore in the seventies. I liked Lemoore then. I, I grant my childrens bought a home here and stayed here, and now I've joined them as of the 28th of June. However, I came from Vallejo. I've been through this one percent tails, sales tax issue before. And it's smoke and mirrors because I've seen the same presentation, which was loosey-goosey with smoke and mirrors and lots of things that you're going to promise. But if you don't put the words and make it a special tax, the population will be screwed because it's exactly what happened in Vallejo. The discussion about police officers always talks in percentages, never talks in head count. Vallejo had need of 180 police officers. It only had 110. When they passed the one percent tax, the city of Vallejo never decided to hire any additional police officers. What they did with the money was advance 24 students to a college degree. They spent a lot of money on things that had nothing to do with improve the roads, one promise, hire more officers, promise number two, hire more police, uh, fire officers, promise number three, none of which ever materialized. So if you don't make it, if you can't afford to have the citizens know exactly what you need and tell them that need under a special tax consideration, you're just blowing smoke up our tail.
I live on 22nd Avenue. Before I, I have four prepared questions. Before I get into those, I'd just like to point out something. Those other towns that were all named with like 8.25 and so forth, every one of them has a paid fire department.
Really?
And there's a big difference. City of Hanford pays $165,000 per paid fireman. Is that where you guys want to go? I don't think so. So my prepared statement is, questions? First of all, Your Honor and fellow city council members, thank you for the opportunity to contribute considerations to the question at hand. I submit four questions. These questions will be ultimately accountable to the citizens of Lemoore. Number one, often we hear the term business friendly, but in reality it's rarely practiced. So the question is, will a new proposed taxes translate to business-friendly environment and encourage local business growth and customer spending? Apparently the chamber doesn't think so. Did the city of Lemoore give a salary increase to employees last year and then now face a deficit spending and budget cuts? The proposed increase is poised to add, be added to the general fund. Will Lemoore citizens be trusting of the fiscal responsibility in light of recent decisions, including those relating to the Lemoore Volunteer Fire Department? Previous city councils over several decades have always treated the Lemoore Volunteer Fire Department with support and quote unquote had their back. They appreciated millions of dollars saved, and it's millions of dollars. The current council has thrown the, this valuable asset under the bus and driven a stake through the heart of the volunteer spirit. If this proposed sales tax increases part of a strategy to replace the volunteer fire department with a paid department, with the eventual elimination of a longstanding community asset at several times of cost to the taxpayers. Lemoore citizens deserve the transparency of knowing exactly the true purpose of the proposed sales tax increase if successful. These are common sense questions that will contribute to, to be part of the dialogue for the citizens of Lemoore to decide. When I served on the council and sat where you sit, I found that government accountability is best served at the closest point between citizen and elected official. It's high degree of accountability. I believe that condition is certainly alive and well in Lemoore. And I thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Jackson in AAACP Vice President. Tonight I speak for the people. When this was first introduced, of course you know that I speak, I get input from the people as well. I don't have to place it on Facebook. I generally just talk to people. So when this was discussed with different members of different organizations, the first question was, why should we pay an additional one percent? Have you currently looked downtown on Main Street and seen the empty buildings? Have you currently looked around the city and seen the empty buildings? What type of retail are we bringing to our city? What, what type of retail do we plan to bring to our city? Yes, we have a Dollar General, but do we need to? Yes, we're at the, the lowest percentage, but what do we have to offer? People are going to continue traveling. Whether you stay, whether you give the one percent increase or you don't. If they're military, the people have spoken, we will drive to NES Lemoore to seek our services. If they're here in Lemoore, they will continue to be leakers and go to Hanford or order online to get their groceries, to get what other items that they need. We need to offer something in Lemoore. Right now, we don't have that to offer. So with a one percent general, um, increase, the other question was asked, well, general is a very broad term. We need more. General what? General put it where? Generally how? They want itemized. They want specifics. They speak as well for, they speak as well as citizens as well as businessmen. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last thing I expected to do is get up here and address all you guys. How are you doing tonight? I was raised in Lemoore. I am a Lemoorian, okay? We have no businesses. A Dollar General that I was just interviewed at yesterday, eight people. That's what they're hiring, eight people. Where are all the jobs here? I now, after working 20 years at Kmart, I work in Hanford, right? At Target. Guess where I'm going to shop? Where I get more for my dollar? Because we have no businesses. What we see going on in Lemoore, there's more in Lemoore. Our police department, our fire department. I give tools to you guys. You guys deserve every penny of that and more, right? But what we're doing to our city by not bringing in businesses, we bring in all the houses we want, but if we have no jobs here, we have no businesses here, our costs are high. I'm going to Hanford. But you know what? I am still a Lemoorian. I cannot stand Hanford.
Me neither.
We are clean. We take care of our town, right? But this is not taking care of our town. The senior center falling apart, right? The roads, right? We actually, we look, drive down Hanford, it has nothing compared to Lemoore. We, we're beautiful. But you know what? We can't support ourselves like this. We need to do more for our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Community activist Rosa Barbie. I live at Wana Street in Lemoore. Mr. Nathan, I, I respect your presentation that you did for us, but I didn't see anything as far as numbers. I saw percentages and I saw, you talked about the parks and green grass and sidewalks, but I need to know where, what are you doing with the money? I need to see numbers. I need to see why you're asking the taxpayers for more money. Have you shown us that you guys gotten beyond your responsibility to bring revenue into the city? I don't think so. Like the lady said, you walk downtown, empty buildings. So before you ask taxpayers for more money, you need to show us what you have done. Show us where the money's going. If you guys got a pay raise last year, don't sit here asking us for more money. Give us the money back and then we can sit back here and negotiate about increasing the funds. But give the money back if you're serious about saving taxpayers' money. Don't waste our time talking about money when you guys gave yourselves a pay raise last year. If anything, any, any funds that should be going to, should be going to Chief Smith, Public Safety, okay? Because he's doing a great job. And we, we're supposed to be supporting our peace, you know, police officers in this city. But, I mean, I'm going to have to start doing open records to see where the money's going. So if you guys can, for our next meeting, show us where the money's been going, how you spend it. Every department has a director. If they've gone over budget, I want to know why they went over the budget. Those are the questions you need to be asking these directors before you start asking for more money, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kristen Curcio. The first comment that I have is, I could probably take, take a look in this room and every one of us shopped at Costco for how long? And Visalia. We paid the sales tax. We went to Fresno. We paid the sales tax. We went to Visalia when we needed our prom dresses. Those are the things that we didn't have in Lemoore and nobody questioned those sales taxes. I was in support of it, but I do think that some consideration for the amount needs to be taken into consideration. My biggest issue right now with entrusting each and every one of you with my money is the volatile relationships that the city council has. I truly do not believe that you guys are on the right path. We have that bank building that is a historic building in this town that has been rotting since I got here in 1999. Where were the enforcement for code? Where were the fines? Where are all of those things that should have been generating revenues that we have failed to collect on? There's so many other things that can be done. The city has got to figure out how to get that industrial park running. The city of Shafter has a phenomenal business plan. They have a phenomenal general fund excess, but they did that because they solicited different organizations to come and use their industrial park and negotiated lower fees for them to come to Shafter, but generated revenue. My last question is, is where in this is all of the income from the new homes that are being built? The amount of revenue that's going to be generated for those new homes, where is that considered before you consider a sales tax?
Thank you.
Subdivisions maintain themselves.
So I don't really necessarily oppose the tax and I don't really agree with it because I do think that our first responders do need to pay, be paid well, but I wanted to use myself as an example for the people that were talking about the empty spaces downtown. I personally tried to open a small business for a service kind of retail thing and I was refused for where I can afford it. So I tried to go to a different zone and it was really expensive. So that forced me to go to another town to provide services for what I do. And meantime, I'm trying to find a place where I can provide the services, but it doesn't seem like it's something I can do here. So I guess what I'm saying is, if it's really hard for us to allow small businesses to open here, I don't see how we can afford the extra one percent tax. So, I mean, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I've heard so many numbers tonight. Let's talk about the weather, Todd, or Nate. Maybe we can get something we can agree on here. I come from a little different philosophy. I'm not a, if I'm a ride the train with him or ride the train with everybody else out here tonight, but I grew up in a small town in Powell, if some of you know where that's at. Then I grew up over by the fairgrounds in Fresno, went to Roosevelt High School. I went to work for a small little town of Sangre years ago in 1975. From there, I moved to a little fire district and worked for a short time at Fig Garden. If you've ever been down Christmas Tree Lane, you know where it's at. And then I went to a little bitty town called Clovis and worked there for 30 years. And here was my philosophy at every place I ever worked, and I still hold that philosophy today, and I hope the gentleman from, probably not here, Lemoore Hardware. I spend my money in the town I live in, if I can. And I understand why there's not a Costco in this town. You couldn't get a Costco in this town if you tried to give them a million bucks. The numbers aren't there. But also from my experience and where I've worked, the numbers will come, but you need rooftops to do it. Rooftops break, if you don't, I'm talking about houses. Rooftops is what made Clovis grow. And I hate to take, say that name because you're going to tell me to go home. Well, this is home. Nine five one tranquility court. I love it. I'm there. We had water problems. I'm probably the only guy in this town to stick my lawn out and put all the rock in. It looks great. And my water grid got cut in half and then you raised my water rate. But I guess I'd be paying double if I wasn't doing that now. But what I'm just saying here is, I spend my money locally if I can. And I tell the guy at Lemoore Hardware, I know the guy, I've known the guy for 50 years. And I tell him, well, you know what this means? Yep, it's that way. And he knows that. But I try to spend my money here. If it wasn't for Fast Trip, I, I don't want to go eat gas, okay? If it wasn't for Starbucks, I'd probably be divorced. Okay? So I spend my money in this town as much as I can. But I guess the big numbers is from my experience, most people move to towns for public safety and schools. That's a pretty known fact if you do your homework. Impact fees I heard tonight talk about on the housing track over here. I did a little homework before I got here tonight and I may be off a dollar or two, but don't hold me to it. $820 goes to the fire department for impact fees on every new home in this town. $806 goes to the police department. For the first time ever did the police get less than fire. Never seen that before. And those impact fees, if I remember right, was $10,400 per household in this town for impact fees. So those are numbers as of August last year, 2017. I still got it on my phone. I'm not that smart, okay? It's Google. But anyhow, those numbers are there. I agree, that's a one-time fee though, if I'm correct, right? You only get it one time. You don't get it every year. And so you've got to do those impact fees to do that. But I guess what I'm saying is, is if you don't do something, sooner or later, you could suffer the worst consequence this town would ever want to see. I know the light's blinking, but it's self-destruct here in a minute.
As long as you keep us laughing, you can keep going.
The worst thing that possibly happened is, is a lot of the people in this room may not know what ratings are in police and fire departments. This fire department has a fantastic rating of one or two. I worked for Clovis for 30 years. We had a two, we thought we did something. And our budget was $12 million a year, okay? And yours is, I think it's zero, okay? You got some other dollars you put in it, but you got zero people. Peoples are where your money's at. That's what costs you money. But what could happen is if you don't maintain your police and fire departments, what's going to hurt the business people downtown worse is when their insurance rates go up because these guys drop to a three or a four. And your commercial insurance and my homeowner's insurance is going to go through the roof. Because I don't have the rating of the fire departments. Some people may not know that number. The other number, I bet if you were to poll people on the street two weeks ago, don't have a clue what the sales tax rate is anywhere.
Nice. Thanks, Ed. Thank you. Nice.
Gina Arcino, 12 Piling. Good evening, council members, mayor, and city manager. There's just two things I want to address. I don't know if you guys know that there's been six businesses have closed this month. We had Eight Limbs, Studio 12, Lemoore Flower, Farmers Jury, Bank of America, and Bob's Automotive. That's just this month. We're only halfway. It's a hard time to stay in business as it is. If you increase the tax, the question will be, how many more will join them? And of course, that causes blight. People won't come here. They won't shop here. Your town will just fold in. So would you rather have what we have now, the tax rate that we do have, or would you rather have everybody get up and leave? Not everybody, but. The general fund, that's another thing, is the general fund. Everything looks great on paper. You guys say where you want to allocate it and where it's gonna go, but things change. We all know that. Things change. There's budgets. There's budgets for a reason. But where's that gonna really go? You really need to air market or do the special tax assessment. I think that's a fair thing to do so the citizens know where everything's going. So in closing, I don't agree, I don't think that a 1% sales tax is what the majority of the business owners or their community needs or wants right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was somebody else, wasn't there?
Victor Labarnway, 765 Champion Street. I was here for the golf sale attempt fiasco. Please don't put me through that again. So, I'm just gonna ask that maybe you consider delaying the vote. Just because, talk about you're already making ends meet and you made a very good point about raising the taxes, because I get it. But you kind of left it open to maybe polling the businesses and the people that own all these vacant buildings and see what they think they can do to bring people here. You have a fantastic chamber, right? Lean on them. Get the businesses down here and say, hey, maybe 80% of something is better than 100% of nothing. So these guys sitting on empty buildings and they're making 100% of nothing. So maybe they'll settle for 80% of a rent rate to fill up the spaces. And I think as far as the golf course goes, that's, again, that's been a big liability. That should be maybe considered for a special use tax. Hold the people accountable. If they like the golf course so much, I live right across the street from it, I love it, trust me. But hold us accountable. If we really want the course, make us vote for how we're gonna fund it. And we keep saying we have no businesses, but there is a ton of business here. I hope to open a second business here next year and then a third a year after that. I'm planning down the road. But if I see the taxes going up, I don't know how that's gonna be possible. So again, I just ask that you delay the vote, approach the business owners on the 80% of something versus 100% of nothing they're getting now, because you are making ends meet at least for the next year. Don't rush to get it on the ballot, because all the business owners here, people coming in, oh, they just raised the rates. Because the media says, oh, chamber approved the rate. They don't hear that the citizens still have to approve it. They just automatically proved it was, or assumed it was, it was raised. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? All right. Let's bring it back to council for discussion.
I did want to make one comment. I actually knew our rating of our fire department had gone down. It was something, the very first meeting that I had with the firefighters, I mentioned how proud I was at that rating. So at our current budget right now, our firefighters actually increased their response time, I mean, decreased their response time. So their rating went down. So the businesses downtown now enjoy a lower tax base because of it. So kudos to our fire department for that. Just wanted to point that out.
Any other discussion?
So, we're trying to put it up and my computer won't pull through to the, to the overhead. So, we will make this, I'll enter this Excel spreadsheet into the record. It'll be available to view online tomorrow. But it kind of shows the 1.9 million dollars proposed tax laid out over the next seven years. And it was broke down into public safety, community, economic development, recreation, streets, and ADA. I, we were formally in this, this has not been vetted by the council or the oversight board that we knew would have to come to this. But again, I was trying to come here tonight to get this to go so we could do the education and get all the involvement. But I can tell you right now, just a couple of things off the top. That gentleman this morning mentioned, or earlier today mentioned, the ADA access to the dog park. The city has a 2009 ADA plan, corrective action plan, that in '09 was three and a half million dollars to fix it. Just in the last three years have we started chipping away at that at the tune of $100,000 a year. So extrapolate that out, eight years later, to where we're at nine years, that's probably $5 million just in ADA compliance issues that have been known to the city since 2009. Everybody wants to build the college up, West Side Development. Well, guess what? There's no money for that. To do the interchange, 12.5 million dollars. That's a minimum. That's not Caltrans fees for engineering. That's just to build the roundabouts and get access over there. But I'll put this on the record for everybody. But the 1.9 million, I can tell you that a majority of it is public safety. Public safety over seven years averages 51.37% of the spend. And with streets and ADA being a 21% spend over the next seven years on average. So there was some thought behind it. Tonight was to get it to go so we could have the education and get the oversight. Because this is just my, me and a couple of people in staff saying, okay, what's the need? Where does it go? You know, Parks and Rec is in here. Recreation the first year, if this goes through, sees 34% of the spend. Public safety sees 32% of the spend. Yeah, yeah, this would be our recommendation going to council. Now, it's very apparent, people don't trust local government or elected officials. You know, I'm sorry you had a bad experience in your old town, but that's not what Lemoore does. And, well, I'd love to prove it to you, you know? And this talk about a paid fire department, it's not gonna happen. You'd have to pass a 5% tax and you probably still couldn't afford a paid fire department.
It would have to be a special tax.
But you just, you couldn't, there's, there's been no mention of converting our fire department to a paid fire department. It's not on the radar. It's not on the list. It's not something we want to do. We value our volunteer firefighters. And we had to dot a few i's and cross some t's, but we've given them everything they've asked. Absolutely have. And I'd be happy to go offline and talk about that. So, we're not, we're not farming out, we're not raising taxes to replace volunteers. That is not gonna happen. So I will make sure this is posted. It'll be an Excel file called the seven-year plan. There'll be a little highlighted section. Please look for it. We'll also post it on the City of Lemoore Facebook page and on our website.
Thank you.
I want to address certain things that were said about our council. It's bogus. We are moving in the right direction. If we had to give four dollars, generally it's better than none. We're moving in the right direction. We got gas stations, we got, Pioneer Square used to be empty. It's getting full, if it ain't full already. We're filling, different businesses are coming in here. We've got 80 Acres about to get taken over. Businesses might be coming in pretty soon to take over that. We are growing and you can see it by, you can see the rooftops. Everywhere you go, you drive down Hanford, I'm on the road, you're gonna see the rooftops. Not just on Facebook, but you're gonna see them if you drive through here. Yeah, you go downtown, any place downtown that was old downtown always struggled, including Hanford. When it first started, when all these other Walmarts came in there, all these other businesses came in, Walmart had issues. But when they came to Hanford and then other things start going around Walmarts and then you got Costco came into Hanford and all these other things, it squeezes downtown a little bit. So you gotta bring things that's gonna captivate the people's attention, the grab military's attention that wants to come here. So that's what we're trying to do. We're not sitting in this saying, we're just, we're not doing that. We're trying, we're working with it. You guys are important. We're here to hear, that's why you guys are here and we're here to hear you guys. Our mayor here is here to hear you. Our council is here to hear you. We all are here to hear you. We all think differently, but we all are on one team. And that's what I'm here to say. I'm against certain things, but we might not think alike on everything. None of us do. But we are working together. And if you drive down, you see all the construction going on. You see the houses, the rooftops are coming in. Like you said, he worked in Clovis for many years. Rooftops are very important. And you can see all through town, we're getting them. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question about something you mentioned, Nathan, that the, the construction that's happening on the interchange, what fund is, is that coming out of our general fund? That 12 million?
There is, well, we've attempted to make a run at doing a project there, but there is no funding available for it. It would have to be self-funded via the general fund or a bond issue. And it is millions of dollars. We're looking at a short-term gap of taking Bush and Bellhaven and making it a temporary roundabout to see what kind of traffic that gets us. But that's the big hang-up to the West Side, is, is the on and off.
So all the projects that you listed were all projects that could be funded by the general fund? Or were they projects that were funded by other, like the Enterprise or other general?
No, no, no. These were all general fund. All general fund. I'm getting ready to email it out right now, so.
I just want to clarify that.
And if anybody wants to stay after and look at this, I'll be happy to sit with you and show it.
Put it up on social media. It'll be easy for everybody to see.
It's taking forever.
Any else?
Nothing.
No?
Well, I haven't said much tonight, but I've got some notes. This is just to move this to the ballot. This is just to move it forward for the people to vote, not that I'm all for. But I think I should add a few things. Our population is growing. We're trying to find a balance between keeping our taxes low so we have retail to come in, but we want economic growth, so we need incentives. We have a balancing act here that's very difficult. But we do have a great town. We have great services. We need to continue those and in the future, it's gonna be more difficult at the current levels that we're at. I don't want to pay any more tax at all. But I think as we go forward, we're gonna need to kind of keep up to the Joneses and possibly move forward with a half percent sales tax rather than 1%. And I don't know if this is appropriate or not for me to ask for a change in the percent to move it forward, or would that change the whole agenda item? I just think it might be too much for the people to handle right now. And I would like to suggest an adjustment to the percentage to, from 1% to a half a percent and see how that would fly and let the voters decide then.
Council can make whatever adjustments to the resolution and the ballot language they choose. If the resolution, if you change it to a half percent, it doesn't really change the other facts of the resolution or the ordinance other than those two percentages and the dollar amount that would be generated from. In January 1st of 2018, we now have to include in the ballot measure the amount of money you anticipate receiving from the tax, which is, so those two amounts would change. Council certainly has the ability to do that. You would have to do it tonight. All resolutions for ballot measures have to be into King's County by August 7th. It also has to occur at a regular meeting. You don't have another regular meeting till August 7th, which means you won't get it on the ballot, which means you wouldn't be able to put it on the ballot again for two more years. So if you wanted to do that, that would be, need to be done tonight. So you may do that if that is.
So a half of 1.9 million is 950,000 over seven years.
That 950,000 a year for seven years. Would be the generated, anticipated generated revenue.
Because it seems to me like there's a lot of people and a lot of businesses that are friends that are not for 1% sales tax increase. But as we go forward and as we get down the road, we don't even know if we'll all be here, but there's gonna need to be some money for this city to continue its services. And as I hate to say it, where we're at, probably not gonna get there. Our budget is so tight and talking about where the money is spent, I'm sure Heather Quarter could answer every question you have on where the money was spent. Because she's got it down to the penny and there's a lot of cutbacks just to get to where we are with our budget for this 2018, 2019 budget. So if there's any questions, please, trust that Heather can answer any of those questions. But, you know, I don't know if my fellow council members are on the same page, but we need to do something. I think that we need to be a little bit proactive. A half a percent better than 1% for our business owners. I don't know if it's gonna deter economic development. I don't know if it's gonna deter people from shopping here or not by being at a seven and a half percent. I wouldn't, I wouldn't probably drive to Hanford over that quarter percent or the half a percent. So, I don't know. Something, something that I was, I think we need to take a look at.
May I make a comment? I believe that was actually what council member Brown asked for originally. We were supposed to be able to see a difference between a quarter percent, a half percent, a full percent, and what that would do. And we didn't actually ever see that. We just jumped straight to 1%. So I appreciate that it's coming back around again, but I do believe that was asked for originally.
Any comments? Any more?
So I would like to make some comments. This has actually probably been the most difficult decision since, in four years on the council. I've had the most input from people on this particular issue. I've gotten emails, I've gotten texts, I've talked to people, listened to all of you today. Obviously, the vast majority do not want a 1% sales tax. And I'm here to represent you. I'm not here to represent Ray Madrigal and what he wants. So obviously, I couldn't, I couldn't recommend a 1% sales tax right now. It's just not, I don't think it would fly here. I don't think it would fly in the ballot box, obviously. I do think that, as Mr. Chedister said, we are in a situation where it's not like we haven't been trying. I really have to take issue with those of you who came up and said, we need to bring more business. We're, we're doing everything we can behind the scenes that you don't, you guys don't even know. But the reality is, it is a business. When developers come here, it's because they think they can make money here. When developers want to build houses, it's because they think they can sell them here. And they're doing that. If you look around, there's a lot of, lot of development going on, not just the one on, on Hanford, I'm on the road in Liberty. There's a lot of it. It's gonna, it's going to increase the demand for services here. And at some point, we are going to have to do something. Our revenues have been stagnant for several years now. We've been talking about economic development. Bring businesses, bring businesses. We try to do that. We try to make those conditions, create the environment for that to happen. I get, I have intervened and talked to staff about that so many times in the last four years. Put people together to talk about what's going on. Why is this permit taking so long? What's happening here? And it always seems to work. It always seems, it's not like this, like we're trying to stop that. That is exactly the opposite. And so I understand, I have, I've talked to three large businesses here. I talked today to probably one of the largest sales tax generators in this city. And that particular individual had no issue with the 1% sales tax. The others all have said no. It's gonna, their margins are so slim that they can't compete. And whether or not that's gonna happen, I don't know. I was really interested to find out what happened in Corcoran. They just passed that. What, what did that do to those businesses? I don't know. I think we're, you know, somewhat similar, but not exactly. But at this point, I just don't think I could support a 1-point sales, a 1-point percent sales tax. And I don't know if we need to bring it back as a special tax. Mr. Alveen mentioned that he thought that we were going to try to push for a full-time fire department. Not true. We've always supported the fire department. We've had to tweak it a little bit here lately. It's been a rough go, but I think we're better for it and so are they. And I just hate to hear those kinds of comments that we wanted to get rid of the fire department. That's never, ever been a discussion for us. I'm here on record and I think all five of us here would support that. So, maybe it is time, I, I just don't think right now is a good environment for 1% sales tax. It's not gonna pass, so let's not waste our time, okay? Maybe in a couple of years, we can. can bring it back. After the citizens, I, I hope in two years, if you all live here, that you come back to us and see what's, what's changed in our budget, in the services that we've provided, because I can tell you right now, we are on a shoestring budget. We really are. We cut nine hundred thousand dollars out of the original budget this year. That's a lot of cuts. That's a lot of services that are not going to be provided, and already people are saying we're not providing enough. Someone said something about the businesses, the code enforcement. We don't have, we don't have this, we have one person to do code enforcement in this city. It's now falls under the police department's jurisdiction. One person to answer call after call after call. High weeds. I mean, it takes us forever to get those weeds cut down. It's a process. It takes a lot of time to do that, and one person can't keep up with the demand. We don't, we don't do almost no proactive code enforcement because we can't afford it. So we just react. That's all we do. So that's what, why you see some of the things you see. That's why you see some of those potholes out there, you know? So I always come into these things, I try to have, I try not to make up my mind until the last word is spoken. I really, really do. I, and I have gone back and forth on this thing. I, I know we do need to. I know what we've done for four years here, and it's not like we've been spending money willy-nilly. The class and compensation study that we did, we needed to do that. We hadn't done one in, what, ten years? Twelve years. We didn't know where we stood when it came to retaining and recruiting good employees. If you want good services, you got to have good employees. How do you attract good employees if you're not paying them what they're worth? We're competing with those cities that you saw on this. When we did our classi- classification compensation study, I think every one of those cities were on it. So we know exactly where we stand when it comes to how much we're paying our staff, and we were, in many cases, we were not where we needed to be. So we have good staff, and we need to, we need to pay them what they, what they're worth, and that's going to take some more money. That's just the, the reality of it. But for the next couple of years, it sounds like we might have to, we're going to have to present a very austere budget. That's just the reality of it, and we can do it. We're going to do it. That's not, not impossible for us to do. So that's all I have to say. If you guys want to entertain maybe another, a half percent, if you guys are thinking that's worthy. If not, then we shouldn't waste any more time on this discussion.
Last thing. I said Hefner Mona Road and Liberty. I didn't count the four other ones. You have D Street rooftops. You have Nineteenth Avenue rooftops. You have, it's a stalemate over there by West Hills College they was going to put rooftops. So we are moving. I just wanted to bring them up where you know it's not just Hefner Mona Road. It's more than that. I just wanted to call that out. That's on record. Thank you.
I also want.
I'm just going to say, does this still have to be requested to make a motion so this thing can die?
Or it can.
Or if somebody.
You can like, like a motion.
That, that's, yes, because we still have to go through the procedure. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
I just wanted to make a statement real quick, that you said that we are trying everything we can try. I have asked repeatedly for help in allowing me to act on behalf of the city, work with city employees, work with other council members to go up to Sacramento, where I know some of the staffers, where I know I can at least ask to be put on the schedule or something, so that we can try and get in front of some of the faces that can help bring, generate. We could ask for infrastructure projects. We could let them know that Lamoore exists. Some people don't even know where it's at on the map. If just nothing else but point a map in their face. But you have dragged your heels every step of the way. I've made suggestions of ways that we can link downtown with the base, and every time I have brought those suggestions behind closed doors, they have been shot down. I have repeatedly tried and tried, and at every step of the way, I don't know if it's pettiness or you just don't see it, but we are not trying everything possible. Not at all. That's all.
Okay, so do we, go ahead.
I, I think to move it forward or to, to continue this or to bring it to a close, I, I'd like to make a motion. I would like to propose to approve Resolution 2018 dash thirty-eight and a half a percent sales tax and send it to the voters and let them decide. It's not our choice, it's theirs. But I just think one percent might be too much right now. I'd like to change the language to read one-half of one percent.
Okay, so we do have a motion for Mr. Chedister for this resolution to be modified from one percent to a half percent sales tax. General sale, or a sales tax for, general tax, and that would raise our tax to seven point seven-five percent, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? So there's a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, I don't usually make seconds, but I will this time, just so we can all vote on them, okay? So I'll make a second on that. Mr. Chedister.
I'll vote aye to take it to the voters.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Ms. Blair?
No.
Mr. Neal?
No.
And I vote no as well. So the motion does not pass? Yes. Okay, we'll move on to the next item.
Counsel, with, with four dash one not passing, four dash two is irrelevant and should be not applicable.
Okay. So we are going to go to new business item five dash one. This is a report and recommendation acquisition of RDA property in the amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five. It's APN zero-two-four dash eight-zero dash zero-six-eight. It's twenty-three acres, and then there's another parcel, zero-two-four, zero-eight-zero dash zero-seven-zero. That's twelve acres. Mr. Olson.
Good evening again, Mayor and councilmembers. So we came, or we, you gave, authorized me to negotiate this property. We went to the redevelopment agency. We have a couple of things going on. There's a, there's a large potential for expanding in the industrial park east of Highway forty-one, just north of Idaho. And part of that, there's some storm drain basins down there that may need to be relocated, so this property from the redevelopment agency was directly across the street. So we're looking at using part of that land for stormwater runoff, as well as potentially some wastewater to grow some forage crops on. Additionally, with AB eighteen-twenty-six, it's a commercial food recycling program that we have to come into compliance with in the near future. It's about not, it's limiting what you take to the landfill for food waste from our local restaurants and businesses by fifty percent. So the idea would be to use this property south of town to do some composting, which is a win for our local businesses, because we do not generate enough food, you know, food, commercial trash out of our local restaurants to run a big truck up and down the road. So we're trying to find a way to eliminate the trip to the KWRA and dispense of that locally. We did agree to pay the, the full price. That was pre-scheduled or pre, predetermined when the land went to the RDA, and we're just here looking for final approval to make that purchase. Oh, and I should mention, the general fund does not pay for this property. It'll come out of the enterprise funds for refuse and wastewater.
Okay, thank you. And any questions?
I can make a motion to.
Let's have public comment first. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item?
Connie Wallashon, it's five-two-three C Street in Lamoore. Where is that property on this map?
So are you familiar with the BMX track?
Yes.
You have the, the Lamoore Raceway and the BMX track on the south side of Idaho?
Right, okay.
It is the two lands that would finish the corner all the way to Nineteenth Avenue heading to the south, that thirty-five acres on the corner of Nineteenth and Idaho.
Okay, so that's the, the ones on the bottom, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so this property is going to cost us two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars?
Yes.
And so that money's not coming from the general fund?
No.
And so the tax, the sales tax is not going to cover this? This is, comes from something?
That comes from your enterprise funds. That comes from your wastewater, your trash, your sewer fees that you pay.
Oh, okay.
Those are enterprise funds. It can only be spent for those purposes. It's not general fund.
Oh, okay.
And additionally, if we do purchase that, being we're part of the, the city would receive twenty percent of that sale in taxes, and property tax would come back to the general fund.
So, so the city is paying, the RDA is now the city, and so the city is paying the RD, city is paying themselves, and then they're going to get twenty percent of that too? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comment? Okay, let's bring it back to council then for discussion and a vote.
Good job.
Any discussion?
I should say, good job. I mean, this is, like, we don't always disagree. This was a really good deal. You were able to make this happen, and the vision for, you know, doing some work with FFA out there maybe, or working with some small businesses out there. I mean, it's just a really good vision, so I'm happy to make a motion.
Count, count, counsel, I just need to clarify, in order for this to use enterprise funds, you have to use it for sewer purposes. So if you use it for anything else, you will have to reimburse your general fund.
All right.
Okay.
You made a motion?
I make a motion.
A second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Ms. Blair and a second by Mr. Brown. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you. Move on to item five dash two. This is a report and recommendation option agreement with KKAL LP to purchase eighty-four point two-two acres. Mr. Olson.
So hello once again. So this is probably the first time you've seen language with KKAL. That's actually cashin'. That's the, the agreement we're entering into. This is just a stopgap. Mr. Cashin is, we're currently going through a disposition and development agreement to bring to council for approval. We're tentative to bring that August twenty-first, but as a developer, he's chomping to get to the bit to advertise those properties. So really just wanted something that ties the property up until we can come forth with the development agreement for council's approval.
Right. And, and this, this decision is not, cannot be pre-decided. The council will have to independently decide on the development agreement. We're still in the SEQA process.
Okay.
Yeah, we're finishing SEQA. And then this development, so people know it's a little over eighty acres. The development agreement we're drafting builds it out in twelve-acre phases over the next eight, ten years. Anticipated a million square feet of light industrial with the potential to bring thirteen hundred and sixty-six jobs to Lamoore. So on a scale base, that's equivalent of the two La Prino plants.
I have a question. So it is for the SEQA, to start, to start the SEQA process, but it's also so, oh, it's not.
SEQA has already been started.
Oh, start, SEQA started, okay. I apologize for that. This is for the.
It's in the review process right now.
Okay, thank you. This is for the, for the developer to start advertising?
Yes. He just didn't want to put a bunch of eggs in the basket and start advertising it. If we backed out or changed our mind, this is holding, holding the city.
I, I have a question. Just because we were able to meet with Mr. Cashin ahead of time, and I asked him a question. I asked him if he would be reaching out to some of the unions, just so that there was a, I wanted just to see a fair bid, if, if there really was this huge increase of price or not, and he said he would, and I just, you know, I don't want to be lied to, so I just want to know, did he? Did he reach out or not? Because if he didn't, I mean, he just lied to me, so I'm just.
I do not know that. I can ask him to get back to you.
Yes, please.
And, and counsel, this is just an option to allow them to advertise, and the city still has the, make the decision regarding the development of that property and the purchase of that property. We have to be very careful not to get ahead of ourselves. So really, this needs to be considered as an option only, and then council can discuss the development agreement when it comes to council.
And we don't have anybody else looking right now at the property, so this is option only one?
Right. The last time this parcel was opted out was to Bill Stone, a developer out of San Diego, and he could not make the project work, so he opted out of his option agreement.
I, I think it's a great idea. I mean, bringing jobs into the city of Lamoore, I, whatever he does, I, amen. I'm just saying, we need, we, we want businesses here. We, we don't want to tax dollars, we don't want to tax the people. If he's going to bring these jobs that are equivalent to the size of La Prino, both plants, equivalent, I, people need jobs. And so kudos, I give them, and thank you.
Absolutely.
All right.
So.
Make a motion?
We're on question.
Well, we. I apologize.
Is there any public comment?
Yeah, not that small. Where is that eighty-some acres? Where is it?
So it is directly north of, it would be the northeast corner of Highway forty-one in Idaho. It is directly north across the street of the racetrack and the BMX track. So it goes up almost to the existing industrial park, and then there's a little leg that goes west to east that gets it up to Nineteenth Avenue. So.
That's not the one with the star? So, okay. Oh, sound like that way, okay. And, but I was reading the, I was reading the paperwork, and you're only requiring a ten-dollar deposit on the option?
Yes.
Is that normal? Is that cheap?
Actually, the last one was a dollar. So on a percentage basis, on a percentage basis, I'm a rock star.
That's a ninety percent increase.
Those are the incentives that developers want to come to town. They're not.
I want to expand my business. I don't know what the hell I want to do, but I want the city to help fund it for me, okay?
Yeah, this is just the option, though. It's not the sell of.
Any other comment? Okay, all right. So we'll bring it back to council.
Make a motion to prove five-two is written?
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Neal. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Chedister?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote aye. Thank you. All right, so let's go to, that's it, five point three.
Five-three, uphold.
Okay, all right. City Council reports.
Well, I would like to thank the Surfranch for the wonderful event that they hosted this evening along with the Chamber of Commerce. It was lovely, and I was sad that I had to leave early to come here. I actually had allotted enough time, but I was stopped by their newest intern, Monica Rivera. She's a former student of mine, and out of nowhere, I hear, Ms. Blair, Ms. Blair. She stops me and had some very nice comments, and it was what really made me want to do the things that I do, to have a student say that you inspired me to want to go out and work in the chamber and, and do some good in our community, and that made me feel really happy. So I, I wanted to thank the Chamber and commend them for their new hire. And I just wanted to note, why would I be under the impression that we would be using an area for a different usage? I, I, I'm not sure where that came up, and I've been led to think a lot of things that aren't true lately, and I just wanted to ask on the dais, because I can't seem to get a straight answer otherwise. Nathan, is it, is it true that you and Darrell are soon to be in-laws? Is that true?
Is it true that our kids date?
I don't think that's appropriate question.
I'm asking because I've been asked, I've been led to believe multiple things about multiple people, and I can never seem to get a straight answer.
It has nothing to do.
And when I ask for more clarification or ask why I keep giving, being given false information, I come to find out the people that would be the ones to investigate are like related to each other.
Councilmember Blair, that's their business. It has nothing to do with nepotism. They're.
I'm not accusing them.
No, no, but I'm saying is, that's your own personal.
I can't get a straight answer about things.
That, it, to be honest with you, I don't think it's none of your business.
It does matter if we're, if, if the, if the city manager and the chief of police are related, does it matter?
Ms. Blair, let that go.
Why?
They, they are, these.
I'm asking because I've been asked a number of things that aren't, I've been told a number of things that aren't true.
Just a minute, just a minute.
Can I comment on that, please?
These gentlemen have more integrity than, you know, I'm not going to say that, but they know enough to recuse themselves if necessary, okay?
I'm not saying that.
So this is way out of line, but you've opened this can of worms in.
I'm asking because I get told, I get told all kinds of things, and I don't know which way is up sometimes with the information that I get behind the scenes.
You don't know which way is up.
Yeah, because you give me false information all the time.
Counsel, we need to make sure this is city-related, please.
Well, because my name was brought up, I feel I have a right to come up and respond.
We are not blood-related. I am offended by that comment, and I'm offended by that comment because, like I told you all, you're elected officials, and your energy should be for the benefit of the city. And I believe that you, Ms. Blair, have an ulterior agenda with everyone that you disagree with, or everyone that opposes your opinion. This is a nonpartisan position, and I'm completely offended by your partisanship on the council. Fortunately, and I'm going to speak because I think it's appropriate time to speak, and the city manager can fire me, right? Now, I'm going to say something, okay? So we have set up as a community, and a proud community at that, and in disgust, I have heard you spew negative comments about many people in this community, elderly people, people who don't agree with your opinion, people who don't share your party values. And I think it's absolutely time to put a stop to it, and I'm holding the council accountable to put a stop to it, and if they won't, I absolutely hope someone will absolutely recall you, because I believe you do not, you do not have the respect of the constituents that you think you have, and once you bring my family into it, then the gloves are off. If you want to have a professional conversation with me, you know where I am, and you know the answer to your question, but you, you ask the question anyway. You perceive yourself as a highly educated person, yet you don't have any common sense. So this is my observation, and my observation alone, and I would just ask respectfully that you leave my family out of it. I have never attacked you personally. I've never attacked your family. I don't disclose any information in your Facebook prosecution that you, actually, you participate on a daily basis. And for a professional person, I would never, ever respond to that, because I think it is absolutely immature, and I think from your position is absolutely, it's, it's absolutely offensive. And if I lived in the city of Lamoore and I lived in your district, I would start to recall myself. So I just wanted to clear the air, because I don't appreciate you bringing my name up tonight.
The reason I asked is because you have lied to me twice, and I want to ask for an investigation in some of the things that I have said behind closed doors, and I would like to ask for an independent investigation, when independent of family members being involved, because I do think that that's relevant.
I think it should have been closed session. I don't think the city, I don't think the community should have heard none of this. I, I really do, I really think we should have had this in a closed session.
I tried to have this in a closed session.
Be honest with you.
Not closed session.
This is not a closed session, item, unfortunately.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
This is getting, this is insane to have our tax dollars. You get four-hundred dollars every time you come here as a stipend on our money, and you're going to ask about somebody who's getting married? That is not how my...
I'm asking for an investigation in some of the allegations that I have made, and I would like it to be independent, and I cannot ask for these things behind the closed scenes. I have to ask for them on the dais, in public, because that is the way we are supposed to communicate with ourselves and with the public. It's here on the dais.
Not about somebody's family, in a public forum, on Facebook, so the entire world can see. You have no right.
Whoa.
If you feel that way, my suggestion is, ask council for consensus, okay? And if you, and if you don't do it, then there's other means out there. You can do whatever you want. But I still think that this was inappropriate.
I would like...
And I don't, I, I, and I know I'm out of turn, and I don't care. Talk to me. Tell me, tell me I'm out of turn. This is wrong. Nobody's went after you, I mean, after your family. Somebody come after my family, I'd do the same exact thing.
I'm not coming after a family. I'm asking for an independent person to investigate my allegations.
You're going to spend taxpayers' dollars to do an independent, on, 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 on two city officials that they're, that they're, just so happens that his daughter and his son, they fell in love, and now they're going to get married.
I would like an independent person to investigate, yes.
For, for what reason? What is your, what is your motive?
Because I have been lied to multiple times. I have been led to believe multiple things.
Ask for consensus.
Yes, I would like a consensus. I know where it's going to go, but go right ahead.
No. What about you, Mr. Neal?
I say no to none of it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
That's your answer. Okay, so should we move on now?
I apologize for my outburst.
I understand.
And I apologize to the community, to all. I, I, I just, I don't want us to end up like other cities. You know, you see them, and they look like, it's, it's a fiasco in other cities, other things are going. This is a great city, and I want to keep it that way. I don't want it, I don't want it to be where we bashing each other. If we're going to do it, let's do it privately, where we can talk. If I want, if I have a problem with you, I'm going to come and talk to you directly. I'm going to talk to you directly. I'm going to talk to anybody. I'm not going to do it where I'm going to expose anybody. That's, I'm, I'm just not going to do it. That's not my character.
Okay. My turn. Okay, we have a, we have a Sustainable Groundwater Management Agency meeting this Thursday, five-thirty here in this chambers. The Prop two-eighteen hearing passed, and what the, what this is, management, what this does is, is, is it deals with a couple irrigation districts, Kings County, the city of Lamoore, Stratford, Stratford Irrigation District and Public Utility District. And what we're trying to do, directed by the state of California, we have to come up with a groundwater sustainment plan to maintain the aquifer, and, okay, because everybody's pumping water out too fast. This is throughout the entire valley. The two-eighteen hearing passed. We're working on the groundwater sustainment plan. We have it happen, done by 2020. So if you want to know more, please come Thursday. You're welcome. It is open to the public. The other thing I want to state is, is we have a lot to work to do in our city. Wastewater, water, sound like a broken record, economic development, you name it, infrastructure. We need, I, I beg council, we need to stay focused on that, okay? Please, I'm asking everybody, and I think, I'm just asking, please, let's just stay focused, stay focused on what we're here for, what we was elected to do. We were not elected to go, anyway, I'm just going to leave, we're, and I'll just leave it at that. I know it's late and everybody wants to go home. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chedister?
I've got a mosquito abatement meeting tomorrow. I'll report next meeting, but I do want to add something about Ms. Blair. I'm embarrassed, I'm appalled. I hope somebody starts an appeal process, because we have a good group of people here, but I think that you have given us a reputation that's uncalled for.
Okay.
I, I think the things that you brought up in the last three, four months is unnecessary, it's embarrassing. You, what, I don't know what you want attention or what, but one of the reasons I'm not rerunning for council.
You're loaded. Makes me feel pretty good.
Mr. Neal?
I said my piece. KCO, I'm on the board. I'm the chair, the vice chair on that board, and we talked about enrollment for kids, parents that are in a halfway property level. They go and they reach out to them, area the kids that need, they need, parents that can go to work, so they got a program that is going, and they're helping these kids, but they have to have the right enrollment for these kids. And so what they're doing, they're going out, and they're going picking up these kids. They're doing everything in their heart to make sure these kids, because Lyndon Johnson started this in nineteen sixty-five, I reckon about fifty-three years ago, for property, kids at risk, all that kind of things. And, and so not only that, it don't just reach out to the poor, it's reaching out to a ten percent, like, for instance, I think California's twelve, the minimum wage is twelve dollars an hour, I think, around that. And so what's going on, you have a parent, two parents making twelve and twelve, twenty-four bucks an hour, they can't get on this, so we getting them type of folks in with their kids as well, so they can go to work. And so I think that's a great thing that they're doing for KCO. I think they're going in there, they got this Margaret Crawford building that they're expanding on, because it's growing, and they're getting a lot of kids in there. They have speech therapy, they have learning disabilities for kids with learning disabilities. That's big to me. You know, you're going out there, you, you're touching people's lives where they can go out and they can go to work, and they drop their kids off, they have somewhere where they have bus fare, where they come and pick their kids up, bring them to the places that they need to go to. And when you have, when you're reaching out and you're touching kids' lives, and they're getting the education while they're there, it starts from zero to three, so they have daycare as well. So Kings Community Action is doing great work, and I really am proud to work with the unprivileged kids. It's very important. Thank you.
Mr. Olson?
So, real quick, I wanted to make a comment, two things actually. One, when, when we behave the way we behave tonight, that impacts our community and economic development. When people want to come to our town and developers come in, one of the first questions I get asked is, "How long have you been the city manager?" You know, "How many have there been before you?" And "How's your council?" You know, I think I got pretty thick skin, but I'm getting tired of it. Other communities, people I know in other cities, they actually, we're like the, the brunt of the joke. "What's going on in Lamoore? Oh, you made a year? Woo-hoo, I lost my bet on a lunch." It gets old. Nobody wants to talk about the good things of Lamoore. They want to talk about this that happened tonight.
We just stop lying, and we won't have a problem.
It's hard, it's hard to, to, to be a professional and do it in this environment.
I would agree.
So, that, and then additionally, I want to remind people, or everybody in the community, that we do community roundtables. I host them as the city manager, at least bi-monthly. Please look for them. We put it on, in the newspaper. We'll run it on our Facebook page, the website. It's a great one-on-one, there's no agendas. You come in and ask whatever you want, and it's a two-way conversation. It's a good way to talk about a lot of these things and get collaboration. We've been doing them. Attendance isn't, isn't very good, though, I got to admit, so we're still keep on keeping on, but I encourage the residents to get involved, give me their feedback. Thanks.
Let me say something real quick.
Yes.
Also, if the people want to contact us, on the city website, there's our emails, and that, if you email me, it comes right to my phone. My cell phone's on, I mean, not there, but, but my cell phone's on my card. If, if you call that number on there, you'll get ahold of me, you'll get ahold of all the other council members. So we're easy to get ahold of, so please, if you have questions, suggestions, whatever, let us know. It's that easy. If you've got some time on a Sunday afternoon, you want to pop some stuff in there, let us know. We'll get back with you. But we need your input, too, please. I apologize for the out of line here.
Okay. You're absolutely right. This kind of behavior scares developers away. I have gotten emails from people, potential developers, and they have quotes from our meetings. They weren't here, but they listened. And this kind of behavior, this dysfunction, and I call it dysfunction, is scary to people. When you have members of this council who do nothing but say things, social media, whatever you want to call it, one-sided, and I have been on the end of it many, many times. Ms. Blair just accused Mr. Chief Smith and Mr. Olson of being dishonest.
I would think that having developers would be a lot more scared of the things that you're doing.
It's my turn. Okay? There is a, I can point you to a comment right now where there's a blatant lie about me, calling me a racist. You've called me a misogynist and a racist. Those are lies, because you forget to put the context into that. When I used that word, I was reading what you posted.
There's a big difference between quoting and actually saying that word. I would hope you would know that difference.
You thought it, okay? No, there's no difference.
Yes, there is. You don't say that word.
We didn't...
There's no, no under circumstance should you say that word.
Okay, that's what we, okay, nevermind.
Are we almost done?
No, we're not. I'm not done.
Okay, how much you got?
I'm not done. I'm not done, okay?
He's talking about the N-word. He said it on the dais. Under no circumstance should you say that word.
Which, which you put on, and I apologize for that. I apologize.
You put me all you want, but you said it.
And you wrote it. But anyway...
I was quoting...
So what I would like to do, we, we had a discussion before about this, and, and we decided not to censor Ms. Blair for her behavior, but I think it's, it hasn't done any good. It hasn't done any good, and I think Mr. Chief Smith's suggestion, I think we should